All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to our special call work session of the Camden County Board of Education. Ask if there's any consideration of open session agenda changes. See, and can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Dr. Banks to approve the November twenty second, twenty twenty-two work session in the Camden County Board of Education. Secuted by Ms. Adler. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Our first item is our new high school product project with representatives of MBCon and Mosley Architects.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First, thank you for having us back. Same team, Ashley with Mosley, Phil with MBCon, and Maggie with MBCon. Hopefully by now you're getting used to us. So we're just gonna kind of go back through the presentation that we gave last time. We have some updates, so you'll see some of the graphics have been updated based off of comments that you all had, things that we would.
And looked at in the meantime. We've created a survey for you to look at. I know this is kind of preliminary to that. You wanted to kind of ask some questions. If we need to do any additional discussions, feel free. And this is gonna be very casual, ask questions throughout. And Dr. Farrell, I know, I think there's some teachers here that are gonna talk about some of their spaces as well. Are they gonna talk throughout the presentation? As those spaces come up or at the end?
We were just looking at asking questions that we needed to as we worked through.
Okay.
You know, their areas.
So it'll just be very casual conversation. Okay.
Great. All right, Ashley, you wanna talk about the site?
Sure. So I won't, I won't go into depths because we've done this a bunch of times, but again, this is the layout as it is on the site now with the acreage that is currently designed. Ball fields in the back, building up front, and we'll move into kind of the layout itself.
Are you driving?
Okay. Um, oh, so the potential improvement, so we've talked a little bit about the fact there are some additional, the additional acreage could provide improved access and circulation. Currently, we are combining some traffic flows as it's designed now, so that would allow that with some additional acreage. We could relocate the building. Currently, we are really restrained by where parking needs to be. We have a lot of parking that's required by zoning on site, and so it's really kind of right up against the building and the building is up against the road. We also have student drop-off and the student lot at the rear of the site where, you know, in traditional design, you would usually have students dropped off more at the administrative suite. So some of those things with additional acreages, acreage could change. And then the added back multipurpose field, we've discussed that related to some of the drainage, obviously, was the reason that the multipurpose field was not or had to be removed from the original design as is, but could be added back with additional land. And then we have allotted for future growth, but we could possibly have other options for how the building could expand. Again, the parking was against the buildings. We really only had one place where additional classrooms could occur.
Yeah, and then the second option, I know there's been a lot of questions about wanting us to do some type of budget comparison between the two sites. Again, we just, we need more information about the additional acreage to really be able to properly cite where the footprint would go. Look at the grades, look at the drainage and see how to optimally cite it before we can really show you what those differences would be.
So moving into building design, again, I'm not gonna harp on kind of the layout too much, but we have the classroom wing to the side of the admin. All of the admin space is in the pink. We have our early college kind of to the lower classroom wing with the shared spaces in between with clinic, media center, and guidance. To the rear of the school, we have kind of the purple wing there is our STEM wing, which has science and all of the CTE spaces and the arts. And then our athletic area along with the cafeteria commons, and that is the main entrance from student drop-off and the student parking lot. So real quickly, just running through some of the renderings that you've seen throughout our presentations, the front entry with early college and the main high school. The secure courtyard area that can still be accessed, so it's not fully enclosed, but is secure and has the breezeway that connects the academic wings that's covered. The CTE lab, just one of the spaces within the school. I believe this is the woodshop space, so just showing kind of the higher volumes in that space. Media center with the Bruin lab. The main gymnasium space. And this is the commons. You can see to the left, that is, it's set up as the dining. This will also function as the main lobby for the gymnasium. And then this is the main corridor going back towards the academic wings. Extended learning area, so this is just an enlarged corridor space between all of the classrooms and the academic space and in the STEM CTE area that provides additional learning space and for overflow from the classrooms. And then our general classroom layout, again, just all of the classrooms have a teaching wall and flexible furniture within.
Okay, I'm gonna do a little intro here.
Yeah, so in the survey, you'll see that all of these renderings have been provided and an option for you to have comments. This is an opportunity for you all to go back and look at and see if there's anything that you want to comment on, maybe something Ashley can go back and look at in the design. One thing that we really want to caution is starting completely over on a complete redesign. We know that there may be some things you should want to look at and you have time, but just keep in mind that we've come a long way. We look at, we want to add back some things that where we can, but trying not to reinvent the wheel as we move forward since we're so far along. So the next few slides are gonna be the options that we talked about, and you'll see these are what we've updated since we last talked. So.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
We have an empty seat.
We don't bite.
We have an empty seat, come on.
We don't bite.
Come on, come on. I won't hit you. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. It's fine. Okay.
All right, so we're gonna run through, these are similar to the options that were presented before, but like Maggie said, we've made some adjustments based on comments. So this one may seem a little confusing, but I'll walk you through it. So this is the additional six classrooms. Again, where we're showing it isn't where it has to be, but we feel like this is a good location for it to kind of extend that, that wing in the other direction, and we have more room to do that with additional acreage. Again, with the main road, right there, we were kind of, I believe, the, the word that has been used shoehorned in, and so this allows us to have a little more room to put additions where they might make a little more sense. The difference here from when we presented the last time is you will see a smaller square here. This is actually our additional science classroom. So one of the comments was if you're gonna ask general classrooms in, are we adding an additional science classroom? And so it makes the most sense for it to go there, just based on how the science classrooms are laid out to keep the department together. What is below that orange square is purple space, which is CTE space. We obviously have to accommodate for that to move. This is not a exact square footage kind of exchange, but if we're going to just add a little appendage on, it doesn't really make sense for it to just be a classroom, so we kind of showed it a little bit larger. Again, these are program, programming things that we'll have to work through if this is an option you choose to go through. But all, all this is, is adding six additional classrooms and an additional science lab in the shift of that square footage from CTE.
What is the cost of that compared to the cost, the previous one? I think you gave us, was it four? It was eighty-three hundred or four point three million? Now it's ten thousand, so what's that?
Yeah, so the cost would increase, and I have a cost line at the end that we can look at.
Let's see that.
That kind of shows you the, well.
Okay.
No, it's not in, it's not in your packet.
Yeah, so it'll, we can, do you want to, we can flip back and forth if you want, or I can just show you them all at the end?
We can just wait till the end.
Okay.
I just didn't think it was in there because it wasn't in the.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
All right.
Yes, sir.
With that, the one that you're showing now, Ashley?
Yes.
The shifting of the CTE, does that actually increase the total square footage for CTE to get closer to DPI's recommendation, or is it keeping that the same, just moving how it's laid out?
So what we're showing here, we're kind of assuming it would possibly increase it by a little bit, but it's not a lot. We're, we're shifting a lab and the storage that goes along with it, so you may get some additional just because of how the building lays out, just for ease of constructability, but I would say, sure, you're getting slightly higher, but you're not getting to where the, the other option for increase in CTE would be.
Okay, so it's, it's.
It's, yeah, it's minimal.
I'm with you.
So that's, that's basically to accommodate for the science lab.
Right.
Classroom.
Yeah, I mean, we could put the science lab up there, but then you're kind of separating your departments, and if we're gonna do it the first time, let's do it right. You know, if you were adding it later, sure, go throw it on the end, that would, that would be fine, but I think if we're gonna do this as an option for the first time or building, we want to keep that department together. All right, so rolling into that CTE revision, so again, this is the CTE lab and classroom. So we did a takeoff because one of the questions was, what do we have now? What does DPI recommend for the spaces that we're looking at? And the program space that was in the school as designed was deficient for both. It was deficient more for the DPI requirements. That was obviously the largest amount. Their spaces are a lot bigger and what they recommend for the lab spaces. So what we're showing here is the sixty-one hundred additional square feet that is additional to what was being built. And what that is doing is taking what was programmed originally in the original design and then adding in the square footage that would get up to the DPI recommendations.
You're just showing it that way. It could go out.
Absolutely.
The other way.
Yeah, like I'm an angle, whatever we want to do. But for, for this conversation, this just was the easy way to show it.
Okay.
Was the square footage originally for the CT, when, when it as it sits? Is Ms. Overton present?
She is.
Did that meet your programming needs with the square footage that they presented originally?
No.
I know it's not DPI, but did it meet what you perceive for, for the upcoming programming?
No, sorry, it does not. The, based on TNI lab and the agriculture lab are actually smaller. And there's not room in there for any additional programs such as early childhood. Or if we go switching TNI and adding solar, or we've added electrical already, we don't have room in there for that either.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So this is another question that came up. I don't know if it was in the meeting or in a follow-up question, but providing additional early college classroom spaces, so this is providing two additional classrooms at the lower end, and we had always kind of shown for that expansion. It was just something that we did not present in the presentation that we did earlier, so showing those additional classrooms for the early college. Auditorium, so we went through this in detail in our last presentation. There are different size auditoriums that you could build. With a school the size that you're building, we really would recommend the lower seat counts than, I believe, what was it? Six hundred was kind of the third option of what we showed in that iteration. So this is the two hundred and forty seat square foot, sorry, two hundred and forty seat auditorium. And then this would be the four hundred seat auditorium. Again, this could go kind of anywhere. That kind of comes in the programming aspect of where it would be located on, on the building floor print, but just for, just for discussion's sake, obviously, there's a square footage difference, but as we explained in the last presentation, the next jump up to that six hundred seat auditorium is when the stage starts growing. There is quite an increase in costs related to some of those spaces versus just the similar sized stage with these smaller auditoriums and then just the seat count.
Yeah, you had the price difference from two forty to four hundred was minimal compared to four hundred to six hundred.
Right.
Of course.
And part of that is like rigging, structure, seating, quality, you know, there's a lot of things that we look at when we go larger. One other pro and con to a smaller versus a larger is if the community wants to use it for a, for a play or a concert, once you get over a certain number of seats, the price goes up significantly for the rights to use that music or that play. And it doesn't matter if you have four hundred, four fifty, five hundred, you're paying that greater amount. So a lot of times when you're trying to decide between the two, you're trying to stay under that magic number, which tends to be around four hundred.
The auxiliary, auxiliary gym is another option. Again, this was one of the expansion areas that we had kind of shown throughout, and obviously, this would stay adjacent to the other athletic spaces. And then some of our site options related to athletic fields and buildings, so an athletic field house. Maggie and I discussed further after our last meeting and talked a little bit more about what you guys were thinking for field house versus probably what was being looked at, and so this is more along the lines square footage wise of what we see in high schools around North Carolina, just more for locker space, storage, restrooms related to, adjacent to the athletic locker room for the players, things like that. Synthetic turf for the football field and then a upgrade in the track surface. Any comments?
Yeah, so with the field house, I think we were looking at a much larger space than what we could design, and I think what you guys were looking for, which there was some disconnect over cost. So I think now we're more in line with what you all were thinking in regards to a field house. The, the synthetic turf is just, right now, you have, we, we have budgeted natural turf, so this would be upgrading to a synthetic turf field. And then the track surface upgrade is upgrading from an asphalt, asphalt surface to a rubberized surface. So that's kind of what we're looking at.
All right, any questions or comments about our options?
The, between you two and you two, can you explain any pros and cons feasibility of doing a hybrid gymnasium auditorium? Kind of like what I was used to in middle school when we had, you know, a stage at the end of the, end of the gymnasium. I know there's probably a little bit of headache as far as time of usage for each, but, you know, you touched on multifunctionality of spaces when we first started these discussions. Any, any thoughts in that arena?
I mean, that is something that we could definitely look at. I think there's some programmatical spaces that it could work in. In a high school, I would not recommend it be off of your main competition gym. I think that the use of a competition gym, you're already kind of strained in the amount of sports that you have and the need for that space. It is something that you could do, but I think you're gonna find that there's gonna probably be some give and take from two different departments trying to utilize that space. There is obviously an option if you went with an auxiliary gym, maybe there was an option to kind of tack on maybe some, a stage or something to that effect to the auxiliary gym. Again, it's not going to be an auditorium. You know, I think that there, you know, there needs to be an understanding of style of space if you go in that direction. Another option that we have seen done, again, usually not at the high school level, but would be putting a stage adjacent to the common space. Again, that would be some cost for acoustics that would provide the sound that would be needed for performances, but not the cost of, say, the, the seats and the slope and, and you know, some of those things that go along with auditoriums. So that gives you some of that flexibility for that space versus building a true auditorium space that though wonderful, are only utilized a few times a year, and that is, you know, something that everybody needs to understand about an auditorium. There's some cost to something that doesn't get utilized a ton. The stage obviously gets utilized a lot, I mean, especially if you decided to add a drama program or something like that, there could be some utilization in that stage, but you know, if you want to look at some of that flexibility, we could find some options and just show you what that would look like, if that's something that's really important, but maybe not biting off the whole, you know, dollar amount of the full auditorium.
Yeah, I mean, the reason I was kind of brought it up is because, I mean, you know, for the oxygen, a sixty-five hundred square foot oxygen, you're talking about three point seven million dollars. For the two hundred and forty seat auditorium, fifty-six hundred square feet, you know, you're, you're looking at five million dollars. So I mean, I understand the cost difference in the, in the space design and everything, but, you know, if we're trying to keep things under a budget, if there's some ways to utilize both spaces and kind of get the best of both worlds, but not ruin both.
Could that work for y'all's needs if the, if we built the oxygen as an oxygen slash auditorium, shared performing arts? That would be a full-blown auditorium, but.
Right now, you have, you were very blessed that you've got an athletic department and a, and a fine arts department that get along well. But you cannot, you cannot guarantee that's gonna, they're like cats and dogs in other schools, and you can't guarantee that you're gonna have two-level-headed, student-centered people.
Right.
Can always work that out. We're, we're talking another thirty, forty, fifty, sixty years.
Oh, yeah.
I'll be long gone, pushing up daisies, but it's, we're doing it again. I'll be, I'll be honest, I don't like the idea. Like, we, like, for example, we've always been able to get along, but anytime there's a, a baseball event, we got booted off the field twice in the last two years because we were a conflict of interest, and so if it's an auxiliary gym, it's still a gym, it's not a performance art space. So how about we'll always take precedence in that matter, but they can't reschedule.
Yeah.
I mean, last year, on the day of, well, the week of our, our spring concert, we were without an auditorium. We're supposed to do it on the baseball field in that tour concert. Baseball was in playoffs and we found out on Tuesday, we didn't have a space for Thursday. Fortunately, church stepped up and let us have it, but
Yeah.
It's, it's not, it's not a good situation.
I guess ultimately, the principal would have the, or is it athletic director have total? How, how does that work? Who has total control of the spaces?
Well, it was a state playoff game that we didn't think we would be hosting.
Right.
And you gotta play the game when it's.
I get that, but in this situation, you'll have a primary gym, so they also miss a secondary.
Yeah, I mean, acoustics and everything, but yeah, auxiliary gym, the stage on it would be fine. It'd be much more easy to, it would be more easy to adapt the auxiliary gym and the main gym.
Would that be?
Runners down and throw, for the fun chairs on basketball.
I would think there'd be less of a chance of that happening as well with an aux gym versus the, the competition gym. I could see, you know, athletics kind of taking priority, but if it's an after-school event, I don't think we're gonna be hosting any games in the auxiliary gym unless something really drastic happens in the competition gym.
Yeah, let's get two things going at the same time.
Yeah, we don't plan on playing any games in an auxiliary gym.
Is that something y'all could, could acoustics be somehow made?
Acoustics are aborted.
Like insulation, better insulation for the oxygen or something that might.
Yeah, we'll have to look at it. We've done it in cafeterias before. Now, obviously, in a cafeteria, you're not hitting a volleyball all the way up, you know, so there's, there's some things that we'll have to look at design-wise to make sure that we can accommodate needs and needs, right? Because we are talking about two different things that need to happen in a space. But I, I think it's worth exploring if that's, you know, something that is important and, you know, a way that we can, we can provide both.
Size of the stage is also critical there. Like, our current high school band does not fit on the stage of the middle school.
Right.
We can't have our concerts there.
Right.
Not grown, and this is the smallest we have been in probably six years because of COVID, and we don't currently fit, so I can only imagine it needing larger and bigger.
Right.
Anything else along that?
No, that was it.
I will say, cost, for cost purposes, so obviously, you have the cost for an auxiliary gym. If we include a stage, acoustical upgrades, you're gonna have a furniture piece because you're gonna need some type of chairs to put out. You're probably gonna want some kind of floor protection down before you put the chairs out, so that would be logistics of transitioning from a fine arts program to an athletic program. There would be some logistics of moving chairs in and out consistently, so that's a program piece. But cost-wise, it's still gonna go up from what you're seeing now, so I just want to make sure that's clear.
But it shouldn't be the.
It probably would not be a full, well, an auditorium, no.
Any other questions, comments about options? Or are we gonna roll into next steps?
So if you choose to move forward with the survey, the, the way that we've kind of laid out the survey is each of these options are there with pictures to kind of prompt you with this information that you, we've shown in the presentation, so you'll have that again. And then the functionality of the survey is this, that you would prioritize them, options one through nine. So you click on them and it goes one, two, three, and you would prioritize them. We would receive your comments, and then we can look at the overlapping top priorities, so that's kind of the way that we were approaching it, if that's how you want to continue. Okay, so the next steps are still the same. Confirming that the additional property is being purchased, completing due diligence, so we can kind of look at the site layout and how this, because, again, this is, you know, we're looking at boxes on a piece of paper that was not designed for potential new location, so we want to make sure that we have time and that we get that right. The second is, again, confirming the total budget of the project. I know with the grant money and the USDA loan, it's a pretty high number. I know maybe there's some desire to somewhere stay in the middle. So we just need to know kind of what we're looking at. And then confirming the final scope, what these additions you want us to look at. There's a potential that we could look at showing some things as alternates. We'd like to try and stay away from a building addition as an alternate, maybe doing like one of the athletic, you know, a track upgrade we could pretty easily show as an alternate. So those are some things to consider as well. I just had survey on here, so we'll, we'll provide that information to Dr. Farrell with the link so that you all can kind of look through that. And, and really, that's kind of the next steps that we see. One thing I wanted to note is that we're, we're potentially still ten months, twelve months out from having a final design if everything continues moving forward. If we purchase the land, get Ashley and Timmons going on a new civil design, it, it, you know, we're still ten months out. So I can show you numbers, which I do have those today, but you just gotta keep in mind that we don't, we don't know where we're gonna be ten months from now in the market, just like we didn't, you know, the last budget that we showed you for seventy-three million dollars was six, it was in May. So I just want to make, that's one of the reasons why we're a little hesitant to keep throwing numbers up there, because I don't, we don't want to give you something that we, we all know is gonna change in ten months. Maybe for the better, not, we're not necessarily seeing that that's gonna happen, but that's one of the reasons why we're hesitant, but I do have the numbers. So these are the nine options that we presented, and I could send this to Dr. Farrell as well. So you'll notice like the classroom addition, the square footage went up, so those prices increased. We, we looked at adding some additional costs in for track surface. We still left on here additional site development. Again, that's part of completing due diligence and kind of figuring out what that's going to look like with the additional acreage.
So what's still left on the design that has us like still ten months out? Then I know we've done a lot of work, haven't we?
So all, sorry, all of Timmons's work basically starts over and it's not because
That's just geotechnical though, right?
No, so every, anything they change, they have to re submit. And that just takes a long time. It is not because it takes a long time to put pen to paper. It takes a long time to get approval through DOT, get approval through the state, get approval through even the county. So there are things that take a long time. We will do our best to make that as short as possible, but I do not think we can get much shorter than ten months just based on what is required with the front end stuff and then the approval process. Because, and then we still have to design in there, but our design piece is, is not the ten months. I mean, it's, it's somewhere in the middle, right? But then that still has to be resubmitted to DPI for their approval.
So like once, once the land, the new land's purchased, then you can get the geo side done. How, how far are we from starting? I guess like site work and stuff like that.
The actual construction, yeah. So we can't start site work until we get permits. We can't get permits until the design is done and approved by all the, by all the reviewers. So it would be ten to twelve months.
So y'all have to have total design done before you start. That's just different from my world.
That's the
My world, I can do site work before.
Yeah, so you
Because it's civil.
Done and all that.
Yeah, because it's civil. Sometimes we are able to maybe do an early site package while some building design is being finished. But since this is the civil part, we can't do that.
Yeah, we're the ones that are ahead now.
Yeah.
Or sometimes we can get, they can get ahead of us and we can keep working. At this point, even just doing a rough grading package would wouldn't really help the process because then we're basically leaving a site that we're not fully designed on for them to do. So I don't think we're going to save time there.
Yeah, and one thing that we have found with the USDA loan is that they actually won't let us do separate packages anymore. So we actually have to submit complete design drawings to USDA to be approved before we're given notice to proceed to put them out on the street to bid. So that's another piece of why we have to wait until we're done with design. We have all the reviews done.
And, you know, depending on how quickly some of those next steps happen, Maggie and our team can put together a more kind of outlined schedule. You know, we say ten months, like just to give you a number, we can lay it out. One, that'll help you understand what has to happen and all the approval processes that have to happen. It'll let us see if there's any way we can shrink that some. But until we kind of know when that ball starts rolling, we can't really say, okay, yeah, sure, we can, this can happen, or and it also depends on what options you pick. I don't think you have enough money to pick them all, but if you, the more you pick, obviously there's more design that goes along with those things, right? So there's some more design time in there.
But you don't need the total design done to get the loan approval from our US though, do you?
From USDA.
You do? We, we can't even get a loan for ten months?
No, you can get the loan approved, but they will not give us notice to proceed until the loan, until the documents are signed off and approved. And they will not grant us permission to start until a complete package is bid and awarded and approved off those drawings. So the process requires a hundred percent completion.
And another piece of that review that USDA looks for is LGC. So even though, once we get notice to proceed to actually bid the drawings, we'll go out, we'll bid, we'll get, we'll get, we'll have bids in hand. And then you can go to LGC to get approval from them. So there's, even once we get bids, there's unfortunate, there's still a review process that has to happen after that before we can start construction, because they will give us permission to bid and then we'll get the bid, they'll review it, LGC will review it, hopefully approve it, and then we'll be given notice to proceed to actually start construction. And we, we can
It's all the process.
Right, we can definitely lay all of this out in a, in a schedule form. But until we know, you know, until we have direction to move forward with design, you know, we're, we're still floating in when we can actually start and we go from there. I mean, I can give maybe like a duration.
Right.
We can give you durations.
I guess I was just a little confused since we technically already bid this project one time. I thought we were further along, I guess than we were.
We bid the civil.
Yeah.
Right, but we're, we have to redo the civil.
Right, yeah.
So that's the piece that we've already bid. And now we're, we're having to start over because with the new additional acreage.
And whether USDA's rules applied at that point or not, because we did stop to rebid it, they didn't come fully into play at that point. Now that there's been a more stronger approval and understanding of the USDA's process, it's clear what has to be done.
So we, we can't do what we did before now. We can't bid the civil.
We can't do an early package.
Alright.
Which we, again, we wouldn't be able to anyways because that's the package that we're waiting on.
Yeah.
Design wise.
Well, when we bid that civil, we had like a footprint that we had a building, we had weights, obviously, because we knew what we had to cut, what we had to do.
We did.
Right.
And we haven't changed far from that design. It's just basically taken this and put it on new ground, which
Right.
Changes to cut fill and all that.
It changes the grade, it changes the drainage. There's a whole new drainage analysis that has to be done. All of your utility runs are going to be different. Pretty much, there's not much that
There's something we still want to do even from moving the footprint, make sure that
Right.
Um, you, you don't expect the foundation system to have to change, but you want to make sure it's still good.
Hopefully it's, doesn't have to be as much, but
Yeah.
We'll see. We'll see.
But still want to check.
Yeah, oh, definitely, you have to.
Yeah, and for Kim to get approval or for, you know, mostly in Timmons to get approval, they're going to have to do all of these things for design.
Can you remind what the base price is?
So this is where we were in May. This is when we found out that you had additional grant funds and we went back, tried to update the budget and come up with the different, so if try to remind you how we did this. So this, this is the base budget. And then we had design fees, which we factored in some of these, you know, adding some of these additional things. And we tried to come up with a reasonable increase in design fees for that piece. I mean, we talked about increasing the FFA and technology at that time. So that wasn't included. And then we put every, all the rest of the money up to seventy three million in contingency. So USDA requires at least five percent in contingency and that's a little over three million. So that's what these two numbers are. I think there was some desire to maybe have ten percent that USDA's ideal is ten, but they'll take five. So that's kind of where those two numbers came in. And so if you take the ten million in contingency and subtract the actual contingency that you have to hold to get USDA approval, that's the, the amount of additional funds that you have based off of this budget that was done back in May. And we did it based off of a seventy three million dollar project cost, but correct me if I'm wrong, if you take the USDA loan and the grant money, it's actually eighty three million. So it's really, again, where, what is the project budget? And then you can back into approximately how much money you have to add some of these items back. But this was the last budget that we showed back in May.
I just want to be clear on like, what, what's included in that?
That's all our ball fields except for the practice field?
Except for the multipurpose field, yeah.
Multi-purpose field.
Yep, and then
What fields were cut? Is there a soccer field?
Yeah, soccer's in there. It was in this, in the site plan. That you just showed us.
It was a football field, baseball, softball. Or is this the
That's a soccer field right there.
Okay.
The top left field.
Yes, yeah.
In this area down here at the base of the football field?
So that
On this end, what is that?
This?
No, all this space down here. Yeah, run, run that way.
That is a retention pond. Yeah, this is where we originally were going to have the multipurpose field, but the, the retention pond increased in size. So there's not enough
That's the current site without the additional acreage.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Original site plan.
Right. That's one of the pros of getting the additional, yeah, that's one of the pros of getting the additional acreage is hopefully, you know, that back in.
How much is the practice field? I'm assuming that's not that expensive, but it was not in this list of adders that we'll have to add.
Yeah, so the practice field's really just grading and seating, so it's, it's really not a significant cost. It's really part of the grading package again. Yeah, and that's kind of one of the adding additional acreage. We had that one point five million that you kind of need to keep in the back of your mind. That's kind of part of that.
It'll be part of the site package, get the practice field in.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Can you go back to the cost side, please?
Maybe.
Sorry.
Hold on.
Okay, well, you had one point two for FFE and one point two for technology listed on there.
Right.
Based on some presentations in the past, what kind of FFE and technology allowance does that one point two give us? Is that sufficient? Are we talking strings and cans again? We were kind of, we were kind of shocked at the last one that we got, that it made it sound like our kids are going to be sitting on concrete blocks and, and using string and can to communicate. I want to make sure that that allowance is enough to cover to make the school functional and technologically advanced to carry our kids through for the next thirty or forty years.
Yeah, so I think originally, and I would have to go back to confirm this, so don't hold me to it, but I think we had eight hundred thousand for furniture and two hundred and fifty thousand for technology.
That's correct.
And now we've increased it significantly. We do try to stay in the realm of about a million each. That would be kind of our minimum. So you're not going to get the top of the line every system by any means, but you, you will have a fully furnished school. And you will have good technology that is twenty first, twenty second century.
Yeah, Chris, I had expressed quite a bit of concern about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar technology budget.
Right. And again, at that time, you know, we were limited by budget. And so when the grant money came in and we realized, okay, let's go back and figure out what we need to, where we need to be. This was one of those things that we increased. So that's why you're seeing this in, when we, when back in May, when we found out that you all did receive the additional grant funding. That was one of the first things that we increased.
Right, I just want to make sure that with that kind of an increase, we're getting, you know, good, good stuff for these kids coming up.
Yes.
In, in your, you spoke about it, it's kind of baseline technology may be a little better. Not necessarily top of the line, but does that mean that the, the infrastructure inside the building as far as wiring and that part of the technology is superb or where we need to be?
Yes.
Versus fixtures that we could actually change
Yeah.
Five years.
Yes.
They are, they're going to upgrade much faster.
Yeah, the infrastructure will be where it needs to be for a school in today, that we would be constructing today, yes.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Today for tomorrow.
Today for tomorrow.
Correct.
So what is in that technology then? Is that just computers?
Yeah, so it, it typically include, so in the construction costs, so construction costs, we typically include the infrastructure, which would be your conduits, outlets, things like that.
Any fiber or anything like that?
Not cabling. So, so all of that would be part of your system, which you would be purchasing with your technology budget. And that would include also, it would include the wiring, it would also include the devices. So for your security system, it'll include the wiring and the cameras and the monitors.
All that comes out of the technology allowance.
It comes out of the technology allowance.
All secure, all the actual like telephones, all that's going to come out of technology.
Yep.
Your low voltage stuff.
Yep. And then computers and then whatever, if you wanted like an LCD screen LCD screens, I think is what y'all are using now. So if you wanted nuance, then that would come out of this as well. But again, this is, would be able to cover those systems.
I was just trying to get a better idea, what, what was in that?
Yeah.
That, that makes, the number makes more sense to me now.
Yeah.
Every, all the devices.
Yeah. And then this would be where, like furnishings would be where we would be talking. If you add the auxiliary gym, one of the reasons why the auditorium is so expensive is because there's fixed seating. That cost is in there. But if you do an auxiliary gym, the seating and the floor protection would come out of your FFA. So that's kind of one of the ways that we've been explained is if you took the building and shook it upside down, anything that fell out, that would be FFA. But anything fixed would be in construction. I don't know if that helps.
And I guess a greenhouse isn't included in this either? That's kind of like, it would be an optional add, or is it included in this?
It, it, it's in there.
Greenhouse is in this base?
It's in the base construction.
Okay, okay. Does DPI have rules on, if we wanted to add, say we wanted to add more space, but we'd like to just do it by building a metal building, like a shop, so it's safe for shop class, auto class or fire program. So they get a fire truck one day, you need a place to store it anyway. Because we could build those spaces obviously much cheaper, a metal, a steel fabricated, you know, the same thing mechanics work out of in, you know, big farm shops, that's something of that nature.
So yes, they do have requirements that you have to meet. It still has to go to them and be reviewed, but you could do a metal building for some auxiliary space that you wanted to do. It still has to meet the codes that are required for a school building. So, you know, it might not, you might find somebody that has built a shop on their land that thinks it costs X. It will probably cost X times because we have to meet certain codes to have it be on a school property, but that is an option. If there was something that needed to be kind of on auxiliary building, basically.
I was just wondering like cost, if we could add, like, you know, maybe get more CTE space, you know, out of that. Especially for the future programs, we may have more usefulness for them, you know.
You're talking like a pre-engineered metal building?
Yeah.
No, they have extremely long lead times right now.
That's what I was going to say. I was like, the lead times are pretty long.
We'll need to order it now, so it'll be ready for a while.
As you're saying, just, just to pre-engineer building for storage, but for an educational space, you still have to come in and sprinkle a profit, do more than just have the building.
Yeah, but this one, this one would be for like, this would be more like shop class, auto mechanics class.
As an educational space.
Right.
So it would be hardened more than it would just be a standard pre-engineered building. So they're not, as, as she was saying, they're going to treat it as a school building, not, not a shop building.
But it wouldn't have to be bricked and
No.
Probably not, but the other systems would have to be more robust.
Right, yeah, like you would, you would have to do certain things. The HVAC is probably the biggest thing. Just for the airflow and things like that that we have to meet for code, but we, you could do it. And we've worked with districts that have done it. It's not
You, you have done, it's been done before. That's what I, that's what I was just
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just trying to see, get as much as we can for everybody, spread this money as far as we can, get, get as much as we can.
Could you explain that US, what you were saying earlier about the USDA and timeline for approvals and everything? And even the design, back to the design part where it's going to take some more time to finish the design work before we get to the permitting process?
So you guys explain USDA. Once, once this, the additional acreage is confirmed. So we know that we have the additional site and we're released to kind of move forward. You're going to have a few months, two to three months of due diligence. That's geo tech. You have environmental studies that you You have environmental studies that you have to do for USDA. Same, the same stuff we did two years ago, first go around, you're going to have to do for the additional acreage. You're going to have to have a survey and a topography done, that takes time. So that's the first step. Then, once we have all that information, that will go to Kim and her, and Timmons. And they will begin the process of developing a new design. And then that includes looking at the drainage, all the utility runs. That includes citing the building in the best position for grading balancing. So we're trying to save cut and fill as best we can. And then also citing it to where you can get all of your fields and we're still planning for that future growth.
Right.
Ashley, and then while all that's going on, Ashley's going to be working on whatever additional scope that you choose to add back, she'll be working on that building design portion.
And currently?
So, um, you have to think, there's a little bit of cart and horse here, right? So there are about three to four months of due diligence. And the only reason there are three to four months, if we called a surveyor today, they would tell us they're three months out, period. So there's a little bit of stuff that we're going to be waiting a little bit on. Um, so we're going to have some time in that, that would be when we would say, okay, you've picked A, B, and C, whatever those are. And we start designing those, we start meeting, we start talking program, we start talking about where they are. A lot of what we did when we first did this, but now we kind of have, we're appendaging on, right? But hopefully by the time we have all of that due diligence done, we have some idea of what that footprint is going to look like. So that then Kim and her team can, we can start looking at the sighting. Because if we wait until the due diligence is done, that is, that's going to really put us behind because then Kim's going to be waiting on us to then, you know. So we're going to try to do as much as we can during that time period. We might not have it all right because we might be thinking it sits here, but then we find out that that's, you know, that's probably not exactly where we need to be based on geotech. So again, we can't give you exactly what's going to happen. We, we can give you our best guesstimate of how we will go through this process. Um, but there's always going to be some unknown. But we get done designing, Kim has a floor plan, due diligence is all done. Um, Timmons does their layout. And then that's when the site plan approval process kind of begins, um, with her submitting. She's got to do her design, right? And then submitting to DOT, submitting to, um, all of the agencies she's required to submit to for, um, stormwater, et cetera. And then when, when that's done, we should be fully done with design. And then we kind of put a bow on it and, um, get final approval from county, DPI, DOI. And then are able to bid and USDA and LGC happens in there somewhere too.
So while all of her designs going on, all of the environmental reports, all of the stuff that we're doing for USDA has to be submitted, reviewed. Any comments that come back have to be addressed. And that's part of the district working with the county and getting that USDA loan information, all the information that they need to actually approve the loan, we will be working on that. They, they won't be able to do that until we actually have those reports back in hand and have all the documentation to them. Once they get all that done and they get the drawings done, then we have to submit the drawings to USDA to review. And then, once they've reviewed it, they'll give us direction, or you all in the county direction to say, okay, now you can go bid it. We have to go bid it. And that usually takes
30 years.
Yeah, 30, 30 days to get bids in hand. So once we have bids in hand, then we can prepare a GMP. So then the GMP has to go back to USDA and to LGC. And they have meetings once a month, so it just depends on where you fall. Um, in the month, you try to get on their agenda. I, I think we were looking at, at taking two to three months from the time you have a GMP till we get direction that we can actually start construction. And that's the official notice to proceed that comes from USDA. And if we try to skip any of those steps, then that funding could be in jeopardy.
So what do we need to get the approval? We just need site control and a site plan?
You mean from USDA?
Yeah, because you said we could get approval before the, all the.
USDA, I was giving you approval alone, but they won't give us permission to start construction.
Yeah, I get that. I just meant like their approval, does it get, at least get that?
Yeah, yeah.
To go to bid?
Yeah.
So there's a lot of pieces, a lot, a lot of pieces to get to where they'll actually let us go bid. That is.
No, yeah, not bid, just approval for the loan.
Your approval for the money, you've already got the preliminary approval for the money, you've already got that now. So this is the, all the paperwork necessary before they'll actually sign off on a loan. I mean, you still get a preliminary, you still have to get a construction loan separately. But this is their sign off saying they're going to honor that at the end of construction.
I mean, like lock our interest rate in or something like that.
Correct.
Is what I was getting.
And that hasn't been locked in yet.
Yeah, no, the interest rate has not been locked.
And what was the difference between now and the last time we got the site work already bid for the previous site?
Processes have become clear with USDA on one of our other projects as we started talking about phasing with them. And that, that's when this came into play that they said, no, you can't phase a project. I think when we did the early site package here, that discussion hadn't come to play yet with USDA. So we may have gotten shut down even then. But when the bids came in and we, we really didn't move forward, that it never got that far with them. But had we moved forward and the loan hadn't been approved at that point, that project wouldn't have been, that amount of work wouldn't have been included in the loan.
We had worked our way up to USDA, getting ready to say, you're good to go.
Right.
And, and then at that point, we had the opportunity to apply for more grant funding. And then the 158 site became a thing and all that discussion. And so it was all just kind of put on hold.
Yeah.
But everything is still with USDA, but now we're going to have, because of the additional acreage, we're going to have to do some of those things again to get us back to that point. But we were right there.
Yeah, so you've been very close several times. Had, had we already started with the site prior to that point, they probably would have said, site work's not included in the loan. And that would have had to been funded separately. That would have been, that's my personal guess, but.
Technically, maybe that's what Rick was, we could start if we just, we just can't, we just have to use the grant money for that.
Well, and they don't even have, they don't even follow that anymore. Because grant money, they consider, you can't commit yet until they.
It is, it is possible that the, that the project. It, it is possible that we could have taken a portion of the grant funding out of the loan application. So we have to, as part of your USDA loan application, you have to submit a preliminary budget. We did the budget based off of 40, whatever the original budget was from the county. That's what we start, if you have 47-ish million dollars.
Yeah.
So that's what we submitted. Since you've got additional grant funding, it's possible, and that would be something that we, we would have had to have verified at that time, that we could have held out a portion of the grant funding and said, we're going to take this portion of the grant funding to do the site work. Here's the project that we're submitting to USDA. It's possible that they could have approved that, that way. We'd, we wouldn't have known until we did, we talked through it with them.
Is that not something we could still do?
Do, yeah.
Yeah.
Why not?
Now, because it's the full grant, I don't.
No.
Well, could we do it now? I don't know.
We could, but again, we're waiting on the civil. So, so the problem isn't now, well, maybe we could try to figure out the financing piece. Now we're actually waiting on the civil design, so we can't start early.
Well, I just, I mean, I was, I was confused because I went back and looked at one of the, um, one of the draft timelines from Rick. And I mean, he had the, the deadline, or the bond referendum being passed in November and us starting site work in May. And I mean, that, that's six months between, and he had, um, design process approval, design development phase, design process approval, construction document phase, all that crammed within that five to six month window. That, I don't know, I was just, I was a little surprised by the timeline tonight.
The goal at that point was because we had a civil design ready to go, that we would try to go ahead and start and use grant funding to fund that.
Right.
That was the goal. Now, what's, what's different is that we don't have a civil design ready to go. And that's the first piece that we have to start with.
Well, we could probably get that in five months. If, once we got the site, you could probably get a civil knocked out in five months, where you then could start in the good.
We'll have permits.
Really think permit's going to take that long?
Yeah.
Want a site right next door to the site we already had?
I know it seems insane, I know it does. And I wish Kim was here, she could give a little more backing to this. Um, hopefully she's watching at home. But it, it just takes that long. I know it's frustrating because it doesn't feel like it should take that long, but it, it just does. Um, there, there isn't going to be a lot of time saved in an early site package, which is a lot of what you were just talking about with that early timeline.
I'm just thinking of like the, the way I, we do it. I mean, I know building a substation is different than a school by far, but I just, we always start, you know, steel's not even done designed yet.
Yeah.
Completely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Even without USDA, it should, yes.
And we, we, I work with, with all US, the same thing, USDA.
Yeah, we've done, we do a lot of early packages. Um, for the purposes of USDA, we, it would be cleaner to do it that way. And we're not going to save any time trying to figure out a way to do an early package at this point. Then it would have worked. Then Ashley was still working on the design. We already had, we were getting final permitting on the original civil design. So we were ready to go out to bid on the site, but she wasn't done with the building.
I just, there's a lot of people in this community that are ready to see some dirt.
Yeah.
You know, I think everybody's tired.
You are too, yeah.
Yeah, I just, trying to see if we can get some dirt moving. Plus the summer is the best time to do it. If you hit us with 10 months, you're going right back into the wet season.
Ready to go.
Which is not the best time to do site work.
So one thing we will say is we will continue to look at the schedule if we can find ways to do it differently.
Yeah.
Um.
We'll save money too on site work if we can do it in May, June, and July versus August, October, November. You're going to get upcharged for having to, you know, work in the wet season.
Yeah, but we, we will present any options we find that make sense. Um, we just still need those steps done. Then we will be better understand when we can do those things, right? Um, if December, all of these things get kind of checked off, then there's, maybe we can find it, we can find a month or two, but.
Did you, one clarification for me, are you saying 10 months after the due diligence is over on the land? Or once we go into due diligence?
You're talking about for civil design?
Just the whole thing.
Oh, so I would say that due diligence is prior to that 10 month clock.
Yeah, so if the due diligence is three months.
Then we're 14.
You're looking at 14, 13, 14 months before you're actually turning over dirt somewhere.
Right, but that's why that's the first, if that would, that's the critical item that we would need to be able to move forward and confirming in the additional scope. Those are the critical.
Once you're in due diligence, aren't you doing some of that work though? You're going to be doing soleborns, I, I would assume that's part of due diligence, right? I mean, wouldn't we?
Yes.
Huh? Just a few?
I think when we lay out a timeline, we can better show this to you.
I got you. All right. I'm sorry, yeah, I was just, I just shot that far out, moving dirt still, I was hoping.
Yeah, we can, we can put together a timeline and try to get that to you all. Um, probably not before Thanksgiving, but maybe Maggie.
While you're cooking pies.
Yeah, and we'll talk to Kim and see, you know, what, what her permitting processes.
Yes.
What she's been seeing. Um, and I'm sure you probably know about where, what you're seeing with DPI and, yeah.
Yeah, and we'll plug all of those things in and see all of them.
So, for me, what is the, how, how do we get the board moving toward consensus on what to add back? Do you think that is best done through the survey? Or does that, is that best done through discussion or?
We have to have a budget first.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's one thing, you know, looking at the, the survey without having the budget numbers.
Budget numbers, the numbers associated, that's why I couldn't really do it.
Oh, so with the, with the numbers they've shared tonight, you're saying that you would be, you could do the survey?
That helps, but I still need to know what our budget as a board is. Like, like you got, like you said, just, what are we at now? We're between like 65 and 83? So where, where are we going to fall in?
So the, so I think that, um, I, I think, and I'm open to being wrong. But I, I think that our original plan was to get you all to decide what your priorities are to add back and then kind of hammer that down and then say, oh, well, that's $8 million worth of things or $11 million worth of things. And add that to the, and then go to the December meeting, joint meeting to start saying, so here are our priorities and it falls at $73 million or $75 million or $80 million or whatever. And then start hammering down with the commissioners.
And that's the thing, to get that list of things, we kind of need to have that number, is it eight? Is it 11? Is it 12?
See, and I wonder if we might be in a place where they would rather us come to them with what we want the total budget to be.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Rather than them saying, we're going to give you $20 million of the 33 million. So you have a total of $70 million, make it work.
Right.
That doesn't make a lot of sense. I mean, if, if, I mean, most of the county commissioners have expressed to me that, you know, don't build a, a new high school that's the same size as what we have now. Go ahead and, you know, have the extra classrooms. And, and if you're, if you're going to throw in the extra classrooms that aren't really extra and CTE space, I mean, you're already at 65 plus eight. Um, that's not including the oxygen, which I, I mean, that's, I feel like it's one of our higher priorities. Um, and the odd story, I mean, so I understand if everybody doesn't want to do this, but I mean, I was, it'd be kind of nice if we could go ahead and kind of do the survey as a group and pin this thing down. But like I said, I mean, I know everybody might not be open to doing that, so.
There's, there's a part of me that would be curious if you did the survey individually to see, I mean, without the dollars, which when we've done things similar to this, whether there was a consensus on just the facts of the different elements. Whether there was a consensus of, for example, everyone felt the same about the auxiliary gym or everyone felt the same about the classroom and that the top three items were all the same. And to be able to say, we all are in agreement, not knowing the budgets or the cost, these two things have to happen. And that helps you also when you have your joint meeting to say, this is, this is the money we need because we know that these are the top three priority. Maybe the fourth item isn't consistent across the board, but these three were. And it's kind of a blind survey. We didn't know the budget, but we know based on the program and the needs, this is what we have to have. And it becomes much more of a factual
Yeah.
discussion as opposed to worrying about whether, what's the cost and how's it fit within the cost.
I think the idea of the survey was, is like what Bill's saying, is it's not prioritizing what I can fit in this $10 million that I have extra. It's prioritizing the program need first. And then let's go back and look at the budget and say, okay, we can get the top three and then maybe the fourth one we can do as an alternate and see how that comes in on bid day. And so it's really evaluating what's most important programmatically to you. And then fitting that, looking at how that fits into the budget later. And we're not saying that we're going to leave something on the table. But if it's priority seven out of nine, is that something that you really want to put that money towards? Or let's, let's make sure that we're getting these top three or four programs that we're all in semi-consensus on that are the greatest need.
What about some of the options we talked about tonight too, like the quasi-oxygen auditorium or performing arts center, whatever you want to call it, it's just not going to be a full.
If that's an option that you want on there, we can try to add that in. It'll, it'll take some time for me, us to come up with what that would look like. I mean, really, it wouldn't take too much.
It wouldn't take a lot of time because we are talking about orange boxes on a plan. Um, I think that we can just add that. Um, and then that allows us to explore that, that also allows us some flexibility with the dollars. Um, I agree with Maggie, I don't want you guys to say, I have $10, how do I spend it? I really don't want this, but I'm only have enough money left for it. Um, because.
I think we want it all.
Oh, I understand, I understand. But I mean, there's also.
You've got to be realistic.
There's also some options where we shift some funds towards technology. We shift some funds towards, I mean, if it's like, I only have enough money for the list, the smallest thing on the list, is there a priority for that funds later? But if we know what your top three priority is, then we know what's left. And then we can really discuss, where does that go? Or is that, you know, is that a conversation where, you know, we, we leave that for contingency or whatever it is?
Like another thing.
I have a question. If we take, let's say, the full amount, 83, and we don't use it. and we don't use it, and we can keep things, you know, keep the belt as tight as possible, we can give that money back, right? Put it back. But if we say like seventy, and then we need seventy-eight, we can't go for that extra eight. Is that right?
So you're, whatever you're applying, so whatever you're applying for, for the USDA land, you're getting approved to apply up to that amount.
Right.
So if you say, okay, well, now we're just only going to apply for thirty million instead of thirty-three million, then yes, you cannot go over thirty million. But if you apply for thirty-three and only spend thirty, that's okay.
Cause you're, you're, you're making draw. I mean, just like any construction, like you're drawing this.
Somewhere if you didn't use all the contingency at the end of the job, you don't need all of it. You don't have to borrow that later.
What is the USDA interest rate right now?
I just.
Two seventy-five?
I just saw it. I can, I can get it for you.
That's another thing. I'm pretty sure like that eighty-three was based on a three percent interest rate. Today, you might not be eighty-three no more. Cause I mean, I mean, it technically is because the bond was thirty-three, but with what was agreed upon, it's not really. It, it needs to be, be able to be carried by, you know, what was approved. So with interest rates going up, that number's probably lower.
Yeah, I think whenever, and you, somebody may correct me, but I think whenever we, when you originally did the bond referendum, they went with a conservative interest rate. Interest rates actually went below that number. During COVID, and I think now they're climbing. I'm not exactly sure if they've climbed back over that conservative number yet.
I want to think it was three or three and a half then. I can't remember exactly, but that's, I'm sure they're higher than that. I know USC is still lower than the the average price that any you and I can get. It's still probably higher than three percent now potentially.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, I'm not gonna.
If you add new options to the survey, can you rescind mine? I went ahead and filled it out, um, prior to the work session tonight. For the rest of the board, I will come, when I filled it out, I filled it out based on my idea of programmatic needs. I didn't look at the budget. I know we can't fit everything in there, but that's how I did it with my top three or four picks were all things for programmatic reasons. Yeah, and I have publicly stated, I don't want to borrow thirty-three million dollars. Just because we can, doesn't mean we shouldn't. However, if the easiest thing to do is to ask for the full amount and then not use it by showing some fiscal restraint, that's probably the easiest thing for us to pitch to the commissioners is just let us ask for it and we promise, you know, we're not going to spend every bit of it. I don't think anybody sitting in here wants to spend the whole thirty-three million. But we also don't want to get caught having to go back and go, hey, we made a mistake. I need another three million. What can you do for me?
And keep in mind too, you, you still have to carry a contingency and it's, if you, it's pretty significant. If you held five percent, that's three million. If you held ten percent, that would be over six. So.
What do y'all recommend?
Yeah, the current contingency you show is ten point seven, the ten percent, which is a good number, the six-two, that's another four and a half million that we don't have to hold in contingency. We can use for programming if needed.
Yeah, for a new construction of this size, five percent would be what we would recommend. If it was a smaller project, a renovation project, absolutely ten percent, um, but not for new construction.
Yeah, three million's a huge contingency. That'll cover a lot of things.
And a lot of it depends on the, I mean, most of your contingency issues are at the very beginning when you deal with soils.
Soils and steel and.
So it, it's one of those things that, you know, it's upfront. It's not, it's not the building itself. Our architects do a good job of the drone.
Yes, she does.
And I guess could y'all also get us a, or just shoot us a price on what that, that, I guess, what prefab steel building to DPI standards? Would, might be.
Are you just talking about like one lab or?
Talking about like a hundred twenty by sixty foot prefab building, then like a new core building or whatever, then insulated and heated and cooled the DPS standards. With, you know, several doors.
So for.
All up doors, I guess.
So for survey purposes, are you looking for that to be an, an option? Or is this something for future?
I'm, I'm just curious. No, I mean, survey, we can, we can just go with, I'm just curious what that would be.
Okay, so that's kind of a separate thing for the survey. So we had the nine options that we showed. We're looking at adding the auxiliary gym to the stage, kind of a hybrid performance gym space. Are, are there any other options? Cause we want this to be all-inclusive. What is your priority?
Well, to me, that's kind of is in there because to me that could be adding CT space, right? Cause then if you can move shop into that and move other things into that, then you opened up those classrooms that are in the brick and mortar for the future CT that are currently in the brick and mortar. And I know for a fact, we're all going to, everyone here is going to vote for additional classrooms first. So you're going to get that ten thousand, but we have to do that. It's, that's, that's a given. So that's going to be the number one thing that's going to be on everybody's survey. That's, I'm going to give you what, two? Well, I guess only one more CT classroom because science lab's stealing one.
For a prefab metal building, wouldn't that, and I, I don't know, again, DPI, what they would say, but wouldn't that fit kind of well for the auxiliary gym space to be made out of a metal building versus brick and mortar? Or is that not feasible for a gym type environment?
I've seen it done, but I mean.
What about field house, like a secondary practice facility?
Well, you can do, I mean, they're.
We have, um, you might not save enough money to do that just because of how small that building is. The money in a field house is really your plumbing and, you know, just your lockers. I mean, lockers cost a lot of money. It's not so much the building itself. We could look at it. We could look at some.
We actually did look at that year ago and the cost came in pretty much, like right on par.
And I was just thinking to do it well, you're still going to spend.
Yeah, I mean, we're doing a metal building in Terrell County right now. It has classrooms in it. It's, uh, one point nine million. So I mean, it's not, it's not cheap building, um, by any means. Not what you would think of, of a metal building.
But that's the classrooms, you're, you got a lot.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot going on in there, but there, you know, your insulation is different than what you might see if you just walked in a metal building. You're just, there's just requirements that you just don't think about because of the space needs that it has. It's not required to be sprinkler. You could definitely get away from that if it's not attached to the building, but beyond that, you're still doing the systems that you.
But I guess even the, what I'm thinking, may have a, a small classroom off to the side, mainly a shop. And then I guess you could have a little classroom area on the side with bathrooms and stuff.
Go to a training center, which is classrooms. It's not for school purposes, but similar purpose, prefab. Actual labs, and then it's built around. I mean, we're doing that in another area.
I just don't know that you're going to see the cost savings that you're looking for. I think maybe a few years ago, you might would have seen that, but I think conventional construction and now these pre-engineered metal buildings, especially in a coastal.
Two hundred thousand dollars for a, a one twenty by sixty versus, first, that's same square footage is three point three million, I think there. But that's, you know, then you double that for heating and air and everything. So you're looking at four hundred thousand, but still four hundred to three point three million. And then, I mean, from what we priced with, you know, local people that do it, it seems like a big difference. But I don't know. I said, Jason just built one. It is, it's not that big. He built ones, he, he asked the guy, same guy, if he built one of that size or whatever. I know it's going to be more, but I would, I would think you double it, even triple that number at two hundred thousand to six hundred thousand. It should be meeting some kind of standards in. Well, not, not as a gym. I, I meant as, as like a carpentry shop, a auto shop.
And it's, it's just the other things that still go inside it. So, yeah, the structure is basically what you're talking about.
I mean, it's real world, right? I mean, you're going to grow up being a mechanic, you're going to be working in a shop like that. That's better conditions. You're probably working in the carpenter.
Now, this would be standalone. So then, yeah, do we have to bring classrooms out of classrooms? Spaces and anything else?
Yeah, I mean, you may want to coordinate a little section, have some classroom. Space and bathrooms, yeah. So maybe would, you would have some sheet rock and walls or whatever.
Okay, so again, that's, you don't want that necessarily in the survey as an option.
So in my mind, it's already in there. It would just be a cheaper alternative.
That CTE.
So then the only additional option that we want to add right now is the hybrid auxiliary gym of the stage.
Can I, can I just add one thing to, for, for my own thinking for what Kevin is saying here? So if you're talking, I think, I think it might be different if you're talking about power. So if CT, if CTE is its currently additional CTE space, as it is currently on these, the little orange boxes, as Ashley says, that's inside the main building part of all that. If you're, if you're talking about adding as an option for CTE for the five of you to consider a separate building like for a shop or fire or whichever.
These are programs that we have that are in the building now that could locate in that.
That's, that's what I'm saying. I think that's different. I think that need, that, I'm thinking that should probably be two separate things on the survey. Because if you prioritize putting CTE, additional CTE space within the main building, within the building versus outside the building, that's two different things, right?
Well, my mind is just prioritizing adding CTs.
Oh, you're just saying prioritizing adding CTE space in general.
In general. Is, is there, is there an alternative where we can do that for cheaper? Still get the same result and then have money to do other things as well.
So along the lines of what they said, you prioritize it.
You know, I still think it's there.
Get connected with me now.
Yeah, I still think it's a need and it's there. It's just like.
How do you make it happen? Just like.
It's like if it's up here, so we're going to definitely do it. Can we do it cheaper to?
Why don't we just do the initial, do an initial study on that kind of space? Because my only other concern would be not to be labored too long after the survey. Cause it would be a site issue as well as far as where we replace it. And if we go through the other parts on the calendar, we don't want to I'm not sure what to put it, if it is a separate building and things like that. So.
We would need that new land. We would, you would, for any of this stuff we're talking about. We're going to have to have more land.
Yeah, so we wouldn't.
What you were saying, we could push these parking lots away from the building, then that's where you could put it. Once you push that parking lot away from the building, it goes right there beside the building.
It could be a study if it, if the CTEs becomes a higher priority. I think it's a study, but it wouldn't be a study we'd spend a lot of time with.
Right. Well, and I think, I think there's just some programming conversations that have to happen with what labs get pulled out. You know, who is in the metal building versus in the brick and mortar?
Yeah, there's options.
Yeah, but it, yeah.
I think it's more like shop class, like things while I'm thinking.
Or one class is.
Well, you could put it right beside, I mean, like our early college kids aren't in the main building right now either. But, I mean, they're close. I, I wouldn't want to like, you know, they got to walk a mile or anything.
Right, I understand.
As close as you could get.
Yeah, and if there is only a small amount of savings.
You make a solid breezeway connector to it. The safeties are concerned.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I, I think that all, that's it. The conversation of pricing will help figure out if that's even somewhere we go. But if CT is a priority, CT is a priority, right?
Fair to say that once we get, when the new site develops, I mean, part of that study could just be simply where we would have additional space for additional buildings if ever needed.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But that's required anyway. That's the whole, having more space, getting these parking lots away so we can expand with classrooms and everything in the future.
Okay, just, I know what I'm doing. Survey. So we're going to say the CTE option covers that, that will be post. If that ends up being a top priority, that's considered adding back. That would be part of our follow-up programmatically and how, and cost-wise how that would look. But for the survey purposes, I'm just adding one option. Are there, are there any other options that I need to include that we haven't talked about that you would maybe prioritize over some of these options? If not, we'll do that one.
Anything missing, Lee?
Mr. Hardland. The field house they have is twenty-six hundred square feet, which is roughly a fifty-one by fifty-one building. Do you know the current size of our field house?
Well, our field house now is also a weight room, which is tiny. It's like.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking.
It's like twelve by forty.
Yeah, now you have to have.
But the weight.
Referee, umpire areas.
In, well, the, the field house itself, mo, most teams don't have a split field house, not at schools our side, where visiting teams and home teams are dressed in the field house. We would probably still, if visiting teams had to dress for football, they would probably still have to use a gym locker room. Now, in the field house, we would obviously need locker room for a home team. You'd need bathrooms. I don't know what the design of like concession stand is. I'm assuming that would have the bathrooms for like.
Yes, that's already designed.
But yeah, the field house would need like a, maybe a, a film room, a coach's office, storage, and then locker rooms where people dress and whatever.
I just wondered on that site plan because the gym is.
And you're talking about in relation to where the football field is?
Yes, all, any of the athletic fields, really.
Well, I'm gonna, uh, you know, the only sport that really dresses for their sport at the sport is football. For Quimms, for example, if we wanted to dress there, then we dress across the street at high school and our bus driver would bring us over to play. We've encountered that where they, you know, they tell you to come dressed. But, uh, how far is that actually? From the gym to the football field? Cause I'm thinking about training room. We might need a training.
Umpire referee dressing area.
But this may also, this will. We can change.
This will change. Yeah. So we were not, in that square footage, we were not accommodating your trainer because that's in the building now.
A long way if the kid gets hurt.
So that would be like, I don't know, two hundred square feet?
Yeah, for, yeah, if he had an indoor and an outdoor, that would, that would help. And it would definitely help with our safety issue and our emergency action plan and all that stuff where we kept an AED or something. Yeah, but they'd have to run in the building to.
Right, everything else you've listed is incorporated in that square footage.
What is the typical seating, Chris, at your, your band concerts?
When we did our, our combined concert, six twelve at COA sold out standard. We then, I, I think that seats a thousand. Yeah, when we did it at Elizabeth City State, it seats, Elizabeth City State, Elizabeth City State seats just under a thousand. It was the same thing. When we did just a high school band concert at, uh, New Community Church last spring, we probably, I think it seats three hundred and it was standing room only. The middle school concert, the middle school at the word seats four hundred.
That's what that seats for. I've been to one of your concerts in there.
The, the biggest issue at the middle school, the size of the other part we're talking is stage space. And we're, we're massive. I, I realize we're looking at a school, you know, what DPI recommends, but DPI doesn't know that Chris Whitehurst and Rose Lee have got a, a band program that's the size of a three and four A high school sometimes.
Those numbers, those gym combination, they might be the more feasible than.
If, if it's spaced right, where we got enough space on stage, if you, if you build a place where we can't perform all of it, we don't fill the stage, it's, it's a waste of money.
What is your ideal stage dimensions for, for our program?
With future growth.
I, I don't know what that, I don't know. I don't have a stage to compare it to.
Like COA stage?
COA stage is probably. COA stage is probably, Elizabeth City State is too small. We're even titled on that. COA stage is adequately spaced.
Could y'all get like that information to see if that would fit in an oxygen, COA's stage?
You know, the middle school auditorium used to be the gym, but it was definitely not regulation. It was probably twenty feet more narrow than what we will probably have for an aux gym. And probably twenty to thirty feet deeper. So you're adding that many chairs. If they seat four hundred, I'll, you know, I think it would go up over five hundred with.
With the aux gym. Unless they made it a little longer. I mean, I guess then.
Does the, does the auditor, in order to get proper acoustics, you've got to treat the ceiling. And that all immediately begins to cause issues for volleyball, basketball, because of the, having to fly where they call clouds. Yes, acoustical clouds coming down. I, I'm, I'm worried about the stage size, but if you put me in a, in a booming gym, it's, it's, it's not an acoustical environment. You're asking, it'd be like asking, I don't know how to describe it any other way. You're just, you're putting a group that's performing in a space that, no matter how good we sound, we're not going to sound good because it's.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Multi-purpose makes it difficult.
Yeah, very, yeah, absolutely.
Because you could put the sound, you could put.
It would, it would not get, it would not get damaged in the cafeteria. So I think there, I think there, again, I think maybe that option needs to be more. Maybe that option is stage attached to something with acoustics and.
You're saying like maybe modify the cafeteria space?
Right. Because I, I hate to say, well, it makes sense on the auxiliary gym. And we ran into issue. I'd really like to talk to our acoustical designer and see if there's any examples of it attached to an auxiliary gym. Maybe understand a little bit better about, you know, the liveliness of the sound. That's usually the word they use to understand if we can accommodate that in auxiliary gym without it being in the areas where, you know, a ball will hit it. And then we can look at the, the commons cafeteria space.
That's already pretty big. If you just like extended it out a little bit further to the right, it was like you could seat a whole lot.
Yeah.
If you were moving all the tables and stuff and bringing the folding chairs in.
And that, yeah, that, that commentary is also the space. So you could not have a band event and then, and a home basketball game at the same time, which puts us right back into the same situation we have.
Oh, yeah. Cause that's what they're coming into the, yeah, I see what you're saying.
So like while I'm in the middle of thinking sharp ozy. Right in the middle of, of a nice pretty song, we've got a, you know, basketball, parents said basketball intermission, basketball halftime.
Unless you created some kind of corridor there.
Yeah.
But you said you can check.
Yeah, I think there's, I, I think we have come up with a lot of options in this conversation.
What courage that high school has. They've got an auditorium, their, their commons area is also their performing arts space. However, they end up traipsing all over to the middle school because that's where the auditorium is.
At least it's on the same campus for them. You don't have to haul all this stuff away like you do. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, sir? So we're doing the survey. Are, yeah, are we doing the survey?
The adjusted survey. Okay, okay.
The amended survey.
Amended survey. We will get rid of the ones that have been done and look at them. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys.
You guys aren't going back.
Thank you.
Good night. Happy Thanksgiving to you then.
Thanks. Anybody have any further discussion or comment as to our presentation this evening? I'll go back to Mr. Purcell's comment of, should we strongly encourage and look at the whole thirty-three million dollar loan for our loan question for county commissioners for our upcoming joint meeting? I think that was one of our main purposes to be here tonight.
Yeah, set a budget, I guess.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, I guess like Sissy said, I mean, we, we're not going to spend it, but it might be just for the purpose of applying for the loan. That's what we're approved for, so.
It is what the voters approved by referendum, so. I mean, nobody, again, I'll say, I mean, nobody, I don't want to use it all.
Yeah.
No, but I'd hate to be caught in the situation and need another million and we could have asked for it and had it established. So great point. I think everybody's in agreement on, on that.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
By Dr. Banks. The last second by Ms. Ivana.
I'm sorry, can I rescind my motion?
Do we have a closed session? Anything to discuss?
We had one advertised, Mr. Purcell, but we don't have anything to discuss in closed session unless you have something to bring forward.
No, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Then I will make my final motion to adjourn.
Dr. Banks has rescinded his motion and Ms. Ivana has made her final motion as a board of education member to adjourn. Seconded by Dr. Banks. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, sir. You have a good Thanksgiving.